I would like to call this meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Currently, we are shy one board member, but he has texted that he is on the way. So, all members will be present sometime soon. We do have a couple of agenda modifications. The Spotlight for Success will not be until 6 o'clock. So, 2A will be moved until at least 6 at the earliest. And Report 7A, Shemekah to Community College, will be now. If they're ready, we'll take them first. If they're not ready, we won't take them first, but here we go.
No, that's great.
We all come together in the headlights.
Yeah, it's all good, it's all good. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Julie Heckstein, I'm President of Shemekah to Community College. And I know that I've met several of you in the past, and I wanted to first say that how much the Shemekah to Community College really appreciates the strong relationship that we have with Salem Kaiser School District. We really consider ourselves partners with you in the education process, and we work so closely with Kristi, and with Mike, and with Kelly, and with Jim Orth at CTEC. I think that I just can't say enough nice things about all the work that we do together. So, tonight, we're here to do a couple different things. We would like to share with you some information that our staff has put together. And so, I'm here as President, and then we have two board members, because this is really something that came about as a result of the board members' interest in sharing with school boards across our district, the important partnerships that we all play, the roles that we play in education. So, I'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Frankie, and I represent Zone 5, which is the Jan Rae Hayesville area of Shemekah to Community College District. So, first things that I want to talk about is how we are working with Salem Kaiser households to reduce college costs. And last year, 1,000, we're going to give you some statistics, and I think there, sometimes numbers can be kind of boring, but it really is important to know the high number of students that we're working with, and I think helping on a regular basis through Salem Kaiser public schools. So, last year, 1,069 Salem Kaiser students paid $25 to participate in Shemekah to's College Credit Now program. They earned 8,583 Shemekah to college credits while in high school, saving their families over almost $800,000 in college tuition and fees. Thirty-nine percent of Salem Kaiser graduates from the years 2013 to 2015 enrolled at Shemekah to. Thirty-nine percent, that's a high percentage. 1,296 Salem Kaiser High graduates with a 3.5 or better high school GPA have enrolled as Shemekah to scholars since the program began in 2008. Shemekah to scholars are awarded a full tuition scholarship. The Shemekah to scholars from Salem Kaiser accumulated a total tuition savings of $6,907.96 through the winter term of 2018. Again, that's almost $7 million that high school scholars burned at Shemekah to, saved. 694 Salem Kaiser graduates who received the Oregon Promise Grant enrolled at Shemekah to during the first two years of the grant. The Oregon Promise represents from Salem Kaiser High Schools, excuse me, Oregon Promise recipients from Salem Kaiser High Schools have awarded a total of $1,121,000 in Oregon Promise Grant through the winter of 2018. And in the years between 2007 and 2016, 2,262 Salem Kaiser alumni completed a Shemekah to certificate, agreed, or transferred to a university. And the other wonderful thing that we're really excited about is the fact that we have career pathways in 12 subjects in six different high schools. Again, partnerships that we are extremely proud of with Salem Kaiser School District.
Thank you. My name is Eva Hutchinson, and it does feel a little unusual to be on this side of the desk, I've got eight years on your side. And then, stay awake for most speakers, so I'll try to make this quick. We are a very collaborative group at Shemekah to, and when you look at the number of things we join in with you, even I think our board was a little surprised. We have people that serve on the CTEC Advisory Committee and the CTEC Planning Committee. We do occupational skills training with Salem Kaiser in the Youth Transition Program. CCBI is providing technology classes, 27 hours, for Salem Kaiser employees, and Salem Kaiser employees serve on advisory committees such as horticulture and wine studies for us. We have in the neighborhood of 800 people around the valley that work on our advise committees, and we greatly enjoy having members of your staff there, because it gives us a much better, well-rounded picture of where our kids need to go and where they're coming from. We're part of the Mid-Wilamette Valley Consortium, professional development for Salem Kaiser faculty. Salem Kaiser, in getting their CTE endorsements from the state of Oregon, provide help with CTE programs of study renewal and full CTE application work. And we assist with long-term planning for programs of study. With all of this, one of our goals is to keep education as affordable as possible. Shemekah to's tuition this year was $99 for a credit hour, which is the lowest in Oregon's 17 community colleges. And even with the raise that we're looking at for the next year, providing our budget passes as we think it's going to, we are still going to be one of the bottom two, and we haven't heard about the other. Because we do everything we possibly can to keep costs for our kids down. Along with that, we have the Shemekah to Press, and Julie will be showing you some books later. We're the only community college in the nation publishing peer-reviewed textbooks. The Shemekah to Press published 13 titles last year. By end of spring term 2017, Shemekah to Press sold over 8,600 books to 12,000 students, who saved at least $500,000 in that period of time for our students. Doesn't do a lot for our bookstore, but that's okay. Our job's not to make money in our bookstore, our job is to help our kids. We will have over 20 new titles, or there were 20 new titles leased in 2017, and there are more in the works now. Every two years, the Aspen Institute evaluates nearly 1,000 community colleges in the United States to recognize high-performing institutions. For 2017, Shemekah to made the institution's list of 150 colleges for the Aspen Prize. Shemekah to is a sole Oregon community college in consideration. And just to speak on behalf of our staff, it took hundreds of hours and dozens of people to put their application together, so we will be waiting to see where it goes. But it all boils down to, we care about the kids in our community, and we care about all those wonderful young people that you're sending to us, and we want to partner with you in any way we can. And with that, I'll turn it back to Julie.
So, a little bit, just a little bit more, I know that we only have a couple minutes, but I wanted to, here are a few of our texts that we're working on, and Kristi and I are going to be talking about that in the future, about partnerships for this. So, we have the one, the very first book that we put out in 2015, when this initiative started, 2016, was Art for Everyone, where it went from a $200 book to $34, and it was done by our local Shemekah to faculty, along with local artists who contributed to this. And so, we're proud, because it's also been picked up for a national, to be, for Oxford Press, so it'll be a national book soon. And then, we also have a writing, and we are doing a lot of work with our math as well. So, what we're doing is, we've taken the $200 and such textbooks, and this book on intermediate algebra, for example, is $30. And so, I'll pass these out, so you can see the type of quality that's what's coming through our faculty, and then also, it's peer-reviewed as well. Because what Jim Eustrom, our Vice President, I want to talk to you about, is what's coming up between Shemekah to and Salem Kaiser, and how we're moving towards the future, and especially during the summer and fall. So, we have several things going on, and Jim, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about that, why I pass these out?
Hi, glad to be here. We have a number of programs. We have staff working with staff, staff from Shemekah to working with staff of Salem Kaiser. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 summer programs going on that are involving kids from the Salem Kaiser District. We have Adventures in Technology, which is the Applied Technologies Department, is offering a four-week summer course for students from North Salem. And so, that's one of the programs that's happening. It's going to have one-week rotations in different fields, so the kids will get a different experience there. Summer Migrant Program Career Exploration in collaboration with Salem Kaiser, the Summer Migrant Program, the college will be offering dual-credit courses for students through this four-week course in dental assisting, pharmacy tech, robotics, and criminal justice. So, a lot of things going on there. We've created something called the Summer Melt, and we were able to apply for a grant from the HECC, from the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission, and they'll be enrolled, students will be enrolled in a tuition-free, one-credit, preparing-for-college class throughout the summer, and then have an opportunity to apply for a scholarship that's being funded for fall term. So, that would be a key piece for them, too, those that are involved. Your Avid program has been so successful, we have an Avid for Higher Ed at Shemekah to. We're doing a bridge with the Avid for Higher Ed during the summer for Avid kids coming from the different Salem Kaiser programs, and something very special offering for them. With McKay High School, we're offering a class in welding, very specific to their request, so another option for high school students during the summer with us. We have Linda-
Fall term, we're looking at fall term.
Oh, fall term.
It's going to be fall term, so the kids will get early release, and then they'll go over there, and in the fall, we're trying to plan for machining.
Go ahead. I have it under my summer list, I'm sorry, it's summer and fall, actually. We have a multicultural student success. Cynthia Richardson, who's with Salem Kaiser, has been working with Linda Ringo Reyna at our school, and they've come up with a program to a cohort of really focusing on students coming in that are African-American, coming into the, trying to create a pipeline and a cohort for Shemekah to as they work with them, too. So, another specialized program that's happening that would start in the summer with some, we're actually going to a conference coming up, and it's helping to sponsor a conference coming up in the next month or so, moving those kids, exposing them, and then bringing them forward for the summer, brief summer, and then into the fall. We have our Upward Bound and our Talent Search programs that have been very active in the different schools that you have, working with school, with kids from middle school through high school, and offering summer programs for them, and then continuing on with tutoring and other things, after-school programs with them throughout. So, we've really been connecting very closely with the staff and faculty from the high schools to make this work. Run through that quickly.
So, I know we took more time than we usually would at most of the meetings, but we have so many strong connections that we're really proud of, and we wanted to make sure that you know that we're proud of those, and that we're proud that we can continue working so closely together, and we'd be glad to take any questions if you have any, if we have time. Chair Kylo.
Anyone have any questions? Questions, Jesse?
Well, I just wanted to comment that I use these books, so I think they're great.
Oh, thank you, Jesse. Yay. Thank you, Jesse, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Anyone?
We loved putting this together, I have to tell you, that that was fun to see this.
I have one question. The College Credit Now, that's taught by Salem Kaiser employees.
Yes.
And is there a qualification on who gets to teach those?
What happens is, our faculty work with the Salem Kaiser faculty, and they look at credentials to determine whether or not there's the field of expertise for those. And you can see, we have a number of those that come through College Credit Now.
Right, but they have to have some credential.
Yes.
It can't just be a first-year teacher doing those.
It really depends, because it may be that they have other experiences as well, and then also, in their career technical ed, there may be times when there is that years of experience, just like in your CTE programs as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Chuck?
Not a question, just a comment. I've been associated with CTEC for about five years, and we really appreciate the collaboration that we've had with Shemekah to. Johnny Mack is on our advisory board, does a great job, and I'm also familiar with Blanchett, and I know that there's step-head classes that are offered to private school kids, too. So, we really appreciate that collaboration.
Thank you. Again, can't say enough about wonderful, so, again, thank you for all the time that you gave us. I'll slip over here and wait till the books come through, and anyway. And so, look for some of that, we're hopeful. We're hopeful that we can figure something out to reduce your textbook costs as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I, at this point, will announce that all the board members are present. There will be one other agenda modification. The monitoring report, Limitation 11, will be delayed until our next board meeting. So, okay, well, we're still waiting for 6 o'clock. The SEDEXO Scholarship Presentation.
Good evening, Superintendent Kristi Perry, and Chairman Paul Kylo, and board members. Thanks for making some time for us tonight. My name is Mac Leary, and I'm the General Manager for SEDEXO for the Salem Kaiser School District. And SEDEXO greatly values its relationship with the school district, and we're always looking for ways that we can help support that relationship. And one of the ways that we do support that partnership is through an annual scholarship donation that goes to deserving graduating high school seniors. And we're here tonight to present a $7,000 check to the district for this year's scholarships. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Gee, this is next one, I'll be that way, too. Still, okay, we'll move on to public comment. Alice has the list for me. It's my list, okay. I understand. Okay. You'll be called up, you'll be asked to give your name, your address, you'll have three minutes to speak on a topic related to the agenda, and I would ask that you would identify what that topic is. So, first person on the list is Mindy Merritt.
My name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside at 2381 Teal Drive, Salem, Oregon. And tonight, I'm speaking to you on behalf of, as the President of Salem Kaiser Education Association. Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry. Tonight, I'm speaking to you on behalf of Agenda Item, the Agenda Item About Personnel Actions. It is with great sadness that I share with you, as I was looking at the personnel items, there are three members on here. Elliot Cameron, Catherine Chapman, and Stephanie Berry. They're three of my early-career educators, who, in the last two years, Catherine Chapman and Stephanie Berry are with my Early Career Leadership Fellows from this year, and Elliot Cameron was my Early Career Leadership Fellow last year. They are part of a grant from the National Education Association, in which we personally worked with them. They worked on their leadership skills, they're phenomenal in their classroom, and their leadership skills at their school site. But they also worked with the nation, at the national level, in Washington DC, working with associations across the country on practices of how to advocate for students, how to be leaders of best practices, how to work collaboratively, and how to continue the work that we're doing here already with our district and our association. And they're leaving us. Elliot Cameron, he works at McKay, he teaches Avid. He's phenomenal. He doesn't have a job that he's going to. He has phenomenal recommendations. Catherine Chapman, she doesn't have a job that she's going to. She's choosing to leave and would rather sub than be here next year. She's okay with that. Stephanie Berry's already been scooped up. She's gotten a job in Portland, five minutes away from where she lives. We have to change this, and like you as a district, I've invested sweat and tears into these folks, and I believe in them, and they just represent a small part of who our early-career educators are. We're at a tipping point, in the sense that we now have more early-career educators than we do seasoned educators. We need to look at the systems and the framework that we have, and how we support our educators. When we're talking about data teams, when we're talking about our systems, when we're looking about how do we pull together and bring together supports, we need to think about this. These are 20-year-olds. How do we build our communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Now, the next person, I'll rotate the, the, the next person is, it says BR, so is that Brother? Burr? Kim? No, apparently Brother, it's not right.
My name is Bree Kim.
Bree, okay.
1374 Franklin Street, and I am here to talk about district mentors. I am a third-year EGC teacher at Sumter Elementary, and I am so lucky that I truly love my job. Third year is very known in the special education world as a burnout year, but I can honestly say, thanks to our wonderful mentors that I had for my first two years of my career, I am still here, and I'm not surviving, I'm thriving, and I truly love it. But it is thanks to the two mentors I had, Tamika and John, that truly helped me navigate. Parents, as a 24-year-old, having six staff to manage is very, very difficult, when they knew far more than I did, and it was honestly one of the hardest parts of the job. And they helped me navigate that, helped me better educate my students, and I, it is crucial, if you want to maintain teachers, that we support them, especially in their first few years, because if not, they're going to leave. And if it weren't for those phenomenal people, I don't know if I would be here still, at least not thriving and truly loving working for Salem Kaiser. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list, I think she just stepped out, is Mindy Merritt.
Board Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, Vice Chair Lee. Tonight, I'm addressing you as the President of Salem Kaiser Education Association. Tonight, I'm addressing you, I'm addressing the Agenda Item, Executive Limitation 11, the Academic Program. As I said earlier, during the conversation about our educators, we need to start looking about the curriculum and the academic programs that we have within our systems. We have a breakdown in communications. Earlier today, I sent an email to our board, the school board, with three different individuals from around the district, a quick sampling of just having them read the Executive Limitations 11, a very quick sampling. Each of the three individuals are happy to have one-on-one conversations and share with you their experiences and where they're at. We have individuals that are struggling, because they're passionate about the work that they do and the students they teach. Yet, their hands are tied, because instead of having professional learning communities that they're able to do the work that needs to be done to teach to the students that they have, they are forced to do professional data teams around ReadyGen, and talk about work that is to the curriculum and where they're at in the map, instead of where their students are, where they are right now, and where their scores are. They're having to do planning six weeks out. I can tell you, as a first-grade teacher, the scope and sequence of my first graders, in six weeks, as a first grader, we can move mountains. And it's important for me to know where they are and be monitoring that, and be doing my assessments, absolutely. But I can't stick with a documented and detailed plan, I need to be flexible with that. And that can get us into danger zones, if we become so rigid that we can't flex. Through these academic limitations, the academic program, we are still not incorporating science in our elementary schools. We are still not incorporating movement. We are still not incorporating time that teaches, accounts for health, teaching health, social studies, art, science, movement. We are specifically teaching reading, writing, and math. Folks, there's so much more to learning than just reading, writing, and math. Earlier this week, I was at CTEC. Let me tell you, they get it. It's hands-on, it's fun, it's engaging. We need that to be for everyone.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Marilyn Ellis?
You're one of the few to pronounce my name correctly on First Read, so yay. My name is Marilyn Ellis, I reside at 6705 Continental Circle Southeast, here in Salem, and I'm here to address the issue of teacher retention. My role with the district is as a beginning teacher mentor, and I've been doing this for nine years. The concern I expressed tonight to all of you is that I have never, in any point of my career, seen such high levels of stress among not just our beginning teachers, but our veterans as well. But my focus is on the beginning teachers, because that's the nature of my job. We know that in the last three months, 42 of the 63 resignations are teachers in their first five years. These are the people who tend to have the most passion, the most enthusiasm, the most idealism, and they are the ones who will embrace and endorse whatever new curriculum, whatever new approach comes down the pike, and we're losing those people. I have many concerns about the stresses we're putting on our less experienced teachers, including things that we hear about why they're resigning, lack of support from administration, or a sense, remember, perception is reality. So, there's a sense that they're not supported, there's a sense that there is no answer to the ongoing behavioral issues that they're observing in their classrooms, there's a sense that their participation in data teams is not producing the results they want to see, and there's a strong feeling that they're spinning their wheels, and they're killing themselves to do it. And so, they're walking away from the profession, or walking toward another district where they believe things will be easier. My goal is to keep them here. We deserve to have the very best educators for the students in Salem Kaiser, and every student, regardless of zip code, deserves to have a highly effective teacher in that classroom, and that's what I hope to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Spotlight on Success, if we're ready. Okay, and we'll come back to this.
You're going to take them around front?
Yep.
All right, we're going to do a little bit different for our Spotlight on Success. We're going to have them come up here. So, our first spotlight is presented by Karina Lee, our Executive Director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, and I also will just quickly compliment you on another wonderful event at the Awesome 3000 on Saturday. So, thanks for your heart and soul and passion around our kids and our community. All right.
Thank you. We had 450 volunteers, making sure that 3,017 students got home and safe with the right person. So, what I would like to do now is to call up in front are Sally Carlos and Ken Dahlke from Dahlke Construction, and Rohitio Cortez from Mid-Wilamette Valley Community Action Agency's Weatherization Program, and also Lisa Tolento, who is the School Office Specialist at Yoshikai Elementary, and I believe Principal Zan Payne is here as well. So, if you would just join us up here. All the way up. Did I miss anybody? I am so privileged to get to announce these every month, and all of them are more special than the than the one before it, but this one brought me to tears. Yoshikai Elementary staff nominated our Volunteers of the Month for May. Tonight, we are recognizing volunteers, Araceli Carlos, raise your hand there, and Ken Dahlke from Dahlke Construction, and Rogelio Cortez from the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency's Weatherization Program. Maria is a third grader at Yoshikai, and her family have been part of the Yoshikai family since she was in kindergarten. Maria loves going to school and always has a beautiful smile, a contagious laugh, and is like a little speed demon around the school. However, Maria frequently misses school because of illnesses. Every year, she spends weeks and weeks at Dornbeckers Children's Hospital recovering. It was during one of these absences that it came to the attention of Lisa Tolento, the School Office Specialist, that Maria's home was lacking adequate heat. The mobile home was on a waiting list for weatherization upgrades. Ken Dahlke, no stranger to community advocacy, is retired owner of Dahlke Construction. He's been a regular volunteer at Yoshikai for years. When he was approached for suggestions, he was more than willing to help and drove to the home that very day to see what type of work was needed for Maria to have a warm home. What was needed was extensive. Araceli Carlos with Dahlke Construction was the project manager, and together with Lisa, they devised a plan for fundraisers and donations from private donors to start the work. Araceli knew exactly who to call to get the ball rolling and the work done. Through her contacts in the construction business and working with various community agencies, Araceli reached out to Rogelio Cortez, Director of the Community Action Agency's Weatherization Program. The program ended up providing their services, parts, and labor to bring heat into the family's home. They completed an in-depth energy audit that included an overall visual inspection of the home, determining efficiency of home by looking for insulation levels, heating system type, air infiltration, and other testing. Not only did they look at efficiency, but they also looked at the potential health and safety concerns for Maria. After the audit, Community Action was able to install a roof, re-insulate the home, ducts were sealed, and install a new, high-efficient ductless heating system. Initially, it was thought they were going to need to raise nearly $5,000 for doors and windows, as they were costly for the weatherization program to cover, but learned that they would also be replaced as the doors were a safety concern and windows were in a very poor condition. Rogelio's involvement was vital to the project and a true blessing. Maria thrilled everyone at school on the day she announced excitedly that her bathroom had heat. Something we take for granted every day, but so needed for any child's health. What could have taken several years to complete has been done by this wonderful team in less than a year. Thank you, Ken, Araceli, and Rogelio for making a difference in the life of a Yoshikai child and her family. And Maria sends her best. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight because she's back at Dornbeckers.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Lilian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communications.
I'm so excited to welcome to the front Air Elementary Principal Karina Valencia Cushman, Assistance League of Salem Kaiser, President Gino Grady, and fellow Assistance League members. So our Community Partner of the Month for May 2018 is the Assistance League of Salem Kaiser, nominated by Principal Karina Valencia Cushman from Air Elementary. Comprised of 320 active members and 50 community volunteers, the Assistance League helps every school in our district, all 65. Air Elementary is a good example of the kinds of work they do to support our students. More than 80% of kids at Air qualify for free and reduced-price lunches, so it clearly is a high-need school. Assistance League programs like Operation School Bell are vital in ensuring students have the help they need to focus on learning. Air staff tell us that students have come to school wearing shoes with duct tape covering holes or in worn-out flip-flops, but Operation School Bell provides students with jackets, pants, underwear, socks, and shoes. Each year, the program gives about 80 clothing kits to Air students. Other important services the Assistance League provides include sending volunteers to help with annual dental screenings and getting eyeglasses and school supplies to kids who need them. Not satisfied with simply helping take care of students' material needs, another big part of what the Assistance League does is provide students with educational and cultural experiences. An example from this year is a music and dance performance at the school by the Al Andalus Ensemble. The performance in the school's gymnasium featured Arabian, Persian, Syrian, Turkish, North African, and Middle Eastern music and dance, which thrilled the students. It's impossible in this short presentation to list all of the support the Assistance League of Salem Kaiser gives to Air Elementary, let alone all the work they do supporting our other schools. For those wanting to learn more about this wonderful organization, which is timely because I learned on my way in that I was volunteered to help you guys with a project this summer, so. But to learn more about this wonderful organization, please visit their website at assistanceleague.org/salemkaiser and learn how you can help them with their important work in our community. Thank you, Assistance League of Salem Kaiser, for all you do. I know I'm personally looking forward to working with you, and congratulations on being honored as our Community Partner of the Month.
And our last spotlight will be presented by Director Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Good evening, everyone. If McKay can come on up. I think we have Principal Rob Schoper, teachers Carl Gardner and Roy Adams, as well as Assistant Principal Pat Schrader, along with our FBLA students. The McKay High School Future Business Leaders of America sent 13 members to the state conference in Portland last month. The group represented McKay incredibly well. In competitions with FBLA students from 60 schools across the state, McKay's 13 students earned six Top 10 awards. Most impressive are the first and second-place finishes by four McKay seniors. In the marketing competition, Bin Ho and Monsay Correa won second place. In the banking and financial systems competitions, Daniel Deng and Henry Trend won first place. The students took an online test and also scored high enough to give a presentation in front of the judges. All three judges gave them a perfect score. These two teams both qualified to be at FBLA Nationals in Baltimore, Maryland this summer. The first-place team of Henry Trend and Daniel Deng will be competing. Their trip will be primarily funded by proceeds from McKay Scott Shop, thanks to their hard work of their students. Both Henry and Daniel work at the student-run store and in the MAPS Credit Union branch at McKay. McKay is incredibly proud of all 13 students who competed in the state competition. To get six Top 10 finishes is an amazing accomplishment, said FBLA Club Advisor Carl Gardner. Congratulations to all the McKay High School students, and good luck at Nationals.
Next on the public comments would be Mark Atkinson.
Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Lawrence Mark Atkinson, and I reside at 2262 Bannenwood Avenue Northwest, Salem, Oregon. I'm here to speak to you tonight about teacher workload and teacher voice. After teaching for...
Excuse me, Mark, which agenda item is this?
Oh, sorry. Executive Limitation, academic programs.
Okay.
And my concern is that many of these commented items that are being done by teachers are being done as volunteers. Either they do it during their school workday and then take their work home to complete lesson plans and grade papers. As a 20-year member of the Salem Kaiser Education Association and a teacher in Salem Kaiser, I've seen the amount of work done by teachers increase every year. Much of that work has not been generated by the teachers themselves. It's been generated by administrative decisions. I've seen my colleagues overworked, undervalued, and this year, more and more who don't think they can stay in the profession. That worries me. I'm in an amazing situation right now as a member of the staff of CTEC. It's gotten great support. We have time to work on teacher-designed initiatives, and the results are fairly impressive. Do we have enough time to do our job? No. Should we have more? Yes. Can we afford it? No. What I need is a commitment that this board and this administration will strategically have teacher voice at the table when teacher workload is going to be affected. I do not believe that has been happening on a regular basis, and that concerns me. I would hope that as you consider the budget, the review of the executive limitations, that you would consider how this affects the teacher workload and the teacher voice that should be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Tyler Skilow-Lakeburg.
Good evening, Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Superintendent Perry, and the members of the board. My name is Tyler Skilow-Lakeburg. I am the Vice President for Salem Kaiser Education Association. I reside at 4283 Lemon Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon. I'm here to speak as a Vice President, representing my over 2,300 licensed educators in this district, excuse me, district regarding the Executive Limitation Number 11. The concern I bring to you revolves around supports and systems for our English-language learners, ELs. While efforts to improve our standard maps, course curriculum, and testing is appreciated, an important foundational support has been stripped away. English language acquisition specialists, also known as ELs', are key to our ELs' accessing language and ultimately success. The most important aspect of a lesson are the strategies and scaffolds used to meet students where they are to bring them to the desired level of proficiency. ELs' have been our district's resident experts for best teaching practices and appropriate scaffolds needed for student success to access academic language. Their guidance and trainings were instrumental to improve strategies within our classrooms and to support students as they strive to achieve academic language. Last year, most of our ELs' positions were eliminated. ELs' were assured that their positions were no longer needed or necessary, as Avid would provide the best practices for language supports needed for ELs'. Or ELs', excuse me. Avid, while it has many benefits, does not provide the necessary components and scaffolds needed for language acquisition. Prior to the district restructure, our district had 13 ELs serving 42 elementary student schools and five ELs serving 18 middle and high schools. Now, after the restructure, we have, what we have now changed the name to Academic Language Coaches, so ALCs. Currently, we have three ALCs serving all the elementary schools and only two serving all the middle and high schools. With this significant reduction, teachers, both ELD and Gen Ed teachers alike, are now without a valuable resource to reach some of our most vulnerable students. Recent data shows a slight decline in our active EL population. My question is, though, does this also reflect our students in transition, labeled T-students, meaning the students have moved from the active EL status to a transitional status? These students are in still great need of supports and effective strategies to help them improve their academic language on their journey to proficiency. In addition, our new ODE regulations now require a monitoring of four years for our T-students as opposed to our previously two-years requirement. In addition, our academic language coaches are not included in the instructional leadership content, meaning that there is not that lens...
Tyler.
...for English-language learners.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Amanda Asp.
Good evening. My name's Amanda Asp, and I reside at 4812 Fontana Court, Southeast Salem, and I am speaking on behalf of the Mentor Grant. I wouldn't be a teacher in Salem Kaiser if it wasn't for my mentor. I was going to leave my school. I work at Parish Middle School, and I wasn't going to stay after my first year. But with the support of my mentor, I did, and it wasn't because she convinced me to stay, it was because of the support she gave me and the guidance I've received along the way, because middle school is tough and Parish Middle School is even tougher. Today, I decided that I wanted to get feedback from other early-career teachers at my school and sent out an email, and it was over half my staff that I was emailing. And I want to read to you some of the things that they told me about their experience with their mentors. When I was in my mentor program, my mentor was like my savior, my sanity, and my personal helper, helper, all rolled into one. Teaching at Parish is hard enough. Teaching at Parish when you're a new teacher can feel overwhelming and soul-crushing. My mentor was willing to come in and simply listen to me, vent or cry, help me clean my constantly filthy and cluttered classroom, help me navigate grading and norming with my peers, or help me brainstorm solutions for reaching those students I couldn't seem to get ahead with. If it wasn't for my mentor, I'm not sure I would continue at Parish after that first year. And it was so great to look back and reflect together, and I knew I was a great educator during those first three years. Even when everything felt like it was going wrong, I always knew that I had my mentor in my corner. Even now, I truly feel the benefits of the lasting and meaningful relationship I am so thankful this program offered. Another person said, "My mentors have both helped me smoothly transition from student teaching to teaching in my own classroom. Both of them supported me, spent multiple days in my classroom every week, giving me feedback, videotaping me, helping me come up with engagement strategies, and watching and correcting my envoy strategies. The envoy strategies, they helped me perfect, transformed my classroom into a calm, friendly environment where students are scholars who work together as a team. Without the mentor program, I would not be as confident as a teacher I am today." And I can say that I 100% agree with everything those two said, and I know that we were able to take those mentors and put them into instructional positions, but they don't have time to give us the support that we need as early-career teachers, and it breaks my heart that all of these early-career teachers are not going to have as much support as I had in my first two years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and second-to-last word, Mindy Merritt. Which topic is this one?
Hi. Tonight, I speak to you about the Mentor Grant.
Hi. Mindy Merritt, SKEA President. I reside at 2381 Teal Drive. And I, tonight, I speak to you about the Mentor Grant. And I bring this forward because it's important for us to recognize that our district is changing in who our population is and who the educators are. And as I shared earlier, we now have reached that tipping point. We have more early-career educators than we have seasoned veterans. We need to recognize that we are identified across the state for the Mentor Program that the grant is going to be identifying for the work that's been done within our district, the grant that you'll be discussing tonight. This grant, as you know as a board, has slowly been reduced in its funding, and that's at a state level. But tonight, I ask you as a board, how do we, how do I as an association leader, how do you as board directors, how do we rally our state, our national level? How do we rally our community for funding to bring forward district mentors and instill and ensure that this program continues? Because what you just heard from our early-career fellow, a leader who is an amazing educator at Parish Middle School, it makes a difference. We hear this consistently. Jesse, when you were able to have time with our early-career educators, that was something, a clear message that they shared. Mentors make a difference. They leave our district when they find out that they only have a year with their district mentor. The confidentiality, the support, knowing they have someone that they can confide in and reach out to makes a difference. So tonight, I just share with you a plea to say, it is the thing that when our district is standing up in Portland at the job fairs and saying, "Come to Salem Kaiser. Come and make a difference," I hear from our people that have been recruited, "I chose Salem Kaiser because you had a district mentor program which is different from instructional mentors that are within our building." Please support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, action items. We have none. Consent calendar. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar? Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone wish to second that?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone wish an item pulled off the consent calendar? Any items? No? 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 Okay. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next would be readings. We have the second reading of the policy. It would be BG 13, Mike? Okay. Which Mike will discuss with us about tax-exempting.
Good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. Tonight is your second reading of a new policy governance policy here, 13. And you have two versions, the clean version and the striked-out version with the changes. So I'll just guide you through the changes from the previous-
Sure.
Okay. From the previous reading. So essentially, one of the major changes is adding family to low-income housing. So this is a stated need in the district and a stated interest by the board to have the community be able to provide more low-income family housing. So that was one of the changes from the previous reading. The first paragraph, you can see that we basically called out the governmental entities, whether it's a city or county, that would actually have the supporting ordinance or resolution that would provide the tax exemption. And if we move down through the document, which you can see is fairly the same as it was before, and we head down to section number four, this is a relatively new change in the policy. And essentially, what it says is that it will either be a city or a county that grants the exception. And once that is approved by the city or the county, the entity that received the approval will have that jurisdiction's percentage of the tax exemption. They will, those entities will typically come to you and ask for your concurrence. And because Salem Kaiser generally has the remaining percentage of the taxable jurisdictions that move the overall concurrence to 51%, which then would allow the full tax exemption, 100%. And so when those nonprofits come forward and ask for your concurrence, basically what this paragraph says is they will have already received the approval from the granting authority and they will provide that verification to you. And you will either grant the exception, concur, I'm sorry, with the granted exemption or not. If you do concur, then this process kicks in, which says it's for one year and it's reviewed annually. But before they bring it back, before those entities bring it back to you annually, they have to go through whatever the verification/ certification process is from the granting authority. Does that make sense? So if the city of Salem granted the authority, they, in their ordinance, have the verification/ certification process. So instead of creating our own, we're just mirroring whatever granting authority/ verification/ certification process is in place. And then, to the extent that there is still affordable family housing being offered, it's up to you to extend the concurrence. To the extent that affordable family housing is no longer offered, this says that you would not concur.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Mike about this? Sharon?
So it's actually a comment, not a question. And you just mentioned it, what I was going to raise. It's not actually authorizing affordable housing. It's low-income housing. So there is a distinction. And we actually have one spot in here where we refer to affordable. In the world of housing, there's oftentimes a difference between what-
Is affordable.
...I can afford and what somebody else can afford or vice versa. But this is specific to low-income housing. And that's what the statute addresses, is low-income housing based on income levels. And so I think we have one place in the first paragraph where we refer to affordable, but really should be low-income, I think.
Okay. We can go back and take a look at that. It's kind of the preamble that says that you as a board support an identified need for affordable family housing. The rest of the concurrence language doesn't say affordable. But happy to make whatever edits-
It's just that one's-
Make the most sense, yeah.
I found it's the last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
The last line.
Yep.
Okay.
Easy enough to strike.
Yeah. Or edit. Okay. Anyone else have a question or a comment for Mike? No one? So I would accept a motion at this time, probably from Sharon, to accept this policy with the change that affordable in the last sentence of the first paragraph be changed to low-income. Would that be the correct motion?
That would be correct.
That would be the correct motion. Thank you.
Second.
Second. Marty? Thank you. Any further discussion about this? Okay. Jesse? No? Jim? No? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye? No? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mike, for all your work. Executive Limitation 11 has been pulled until the next meeting. And so now, we are at Strategic Plan Report, Human Resource Metrics. Mr. Bates.
Good evening, Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. I'm pleased to give you a progress report on Strategic Plan Number 7 and wanted to share a little bit about what we've done this year regarding that plan. We know that hiring staff is the most important and high-leverage activity we can do in order to help our kids graduate and be prepared for a successful life. And to that end, we have a lot of processes in place to keep improving what we do around our hiring practice. Specifically, we collect a lot of data through the application and hiring process, and we've taken a deeper dive into that this year in order to use that information in more effective ways. And I want to take a few minutes and highlight some of the ways that we've done that. The district has a long history of collecting lots of data and storing lots of data, and it's only been in recent years that we have started to improve the way that we pull that data and the way that we use it in ways to inform the changes in our practice. One of the challenges that has happened with that and still we face is that the data is stored in different electronic systems. And even until recently, a lot of the data was stored on paper. And so coming up with ways to manage large amounts of data that you can use to inform decision-making has been a challenge. But I'm happy to report we've made some progress on that this year, and I'll share a little bit about that with you. But before I launch into some of the uses of the data, I want to talk a little bit about some of the ways that we, some of the different areas that the data comes from. For example, this year to date, our recruiting efforts have taken us to over 80 individual events and contacts with hundreds of potential employees during those different events. We have also incorporated the use of video interviewing as part of screening and application process, and that has given us a new way to interface with potential employees. We continue to work on our relationships with universities for recruitment of all employees, but primarily licensed staff. And in doing that, we not only look at those opportunities to foster student-teaching relationships, programs for current staff to go back and become licensed educators, and recruitment opportunities as well just through graduates of teacher preparation programs. The areas that help us with this also feed into a very important metric around staff retention. And I'm happy to report that we beat the national average. Nationally, school districts have a turnover rate of 12 to 13%, and we're at around 10% every year, but we want to do better. And in order to do that, we're continuing to look at ways to collect more information about those employees who leave us. And we have, for about the last year now, used an electronic exit survey, which we're continuing to try to promote and gather even better data about why people may separate employment from us. All of this points to a very important part of our strategic plan, which has to do with the diversity in hiring. And in the report tonight, you'll see a sample metric, and I want to take a minute to explain that because I know in the hard copies the board was given, some of the information there is not legible. And the important part is the bar graphs, and I'll explain why this is provided as a sample. So back to my earlier comments about how we're using the data. One of the things that we know is during the application process, applicants share information about race and ethnicity, gender, and military service, and that that information is important in ensuring that we're providing equitable and diverse employment opportunities. And so the data that you see here across the first horizontal row talks about the information related to those people who apply for jobs with us. And as you can see, there's, the race and ethnicity provides different numbers of people who identify in those categories, same with gender and veteran experience. And then if you see the bottom row, those are the representatives of the people we actually hire. And the good news in this graphic is that through the collection and analysis of this data, and I will say that this data was produced through a software program that has recently been made available to us because the way that we track who we hire and who we apply lives in two different electronic systems. And so this has only been able to do by hand until recently. So now, we're excited that we can do this electronically with some greater efficiency. And the information shows that we hire the same percentages of people who apply. So what that tells us is that we have hiring processes in place that provide a fair and equitable selection of employees based on race and ethnicity, gender, and military service. So for example, if we have 30% of our applicants of a particular race or ethnicity apply, we hire about 30% of those people. So the good news is that we know that we don't have discriminatory practices happening in our selection process, and it points us to our recruiting efforts because in order to continue to diversify our workforce so that it more closely reflects our student population, we need to increase the number of applicants in different areas. So the efforts then for us can focus more on how we're attracting applicants rather than the selection process. So this is provided as an example of one way we're getting better at using analytics and being able to provide more current information about our efforts. Another piece that I would mention that relates to the efficiencies portion of this strategic plan has to do with some internal processes around personnel actions. And that's a process that happens anytime we change the amount of hours someone works, that we hire an individual, that we reassign an individual. And that historically has happened on paper, and we are just now getting ready to launch an electronic process in order to benefit from some systems efficiencies with that. That was not included in your report tonight, but it was a highlight I wanted to mention. So in summary, we recognize that we're in the early stages of using data in ways that will be more informative to adjust our practice. We know that we've spent a great deal of time this year just having to, what I call, clean the data, meaning that we have discovered that some of the information we've stored in different ways and in different places in our systems. And so being able to be consistent about that practice will really help us in the future so that we can make faster and better decisions. The long-term goal is to develop and utilize an array of predictive analytics for recruitment and hiring practices and to continue to improve our systems efficiencies. So I hope this gives a little insight into some of the things that we're doing with improving our processes and hiring and other things related to management of personnel.
Any questions for John? Jim?
So John, a quick question for you. And I know as you're transitioning into better data electronically, let me give you a scenario and tell me how the district does it currently. If an employee from Salem Kaiser is looking to leave to go to a different district-
Mm-hmm.
-do they call, does that district call our HR office to get a recommendation, know how long they worked there? Do we have that data at the HR office? Or do they have to go to the school where the teacher or the employee was at?
Yeah. Great question. For reference checking, the supervisor or the school is contacted. For verification of employment, that comes to the Human Resources Office.
So a district, an employee's leaving our district to go to work, Corvallis School District. The Corvallis School District will have to call both our HR office and the employee's supervisor, wherever that was at, to get employment verification and recommendation or evaluation?
Yes. Typically, the employment verification happens through electronic or mail correspondence, and the reference checks typically happen either through email or phone calls. But it is two different requests.
So as the data moves into, Mr. Chair, if I may?
You may.
The data changes. Are we going to be able to have that more streamlined or is that still going to be two touchpoints to our district?
That particular piece that you're asking about, right now, we don't have on a short list for addressing and response to other districts. We do internally look at the efficiencies around our own requesting reference information in particular, and we currently use a combination of electronic and personal or phone calls to do that. And there's processes underway to try to see how we can get accurate information quicker and more efficiently.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Jesse? No? Sharon? Go ahead.
I have a comment. I really, really appreciate that you're tracking veterans' status as a category. And you talked about the different events and different things. And I know, you know, so many of our returning National Guard folks would make great employees. However, they don't yet have the training specific to education. So are we looking, as a district, about how to partner within the state, how to find ways to encourage, you know, whether it's a returning National Guard, men or women, to look at our education programs to become teachers?
Your question is, are we specifically partnering with someone about recruiting veterans? Is that-
Correct. And maybe not just necessarily veterans, but, you know, we have a very large pool of National Guardsmen and Women here in the Salem area, so Salem Kaiser area.
We, what I guess I can tell you is that we track, when they self-identify during the application process, who those men and women are, and that we track then what our selection rate and proportion to those number of people who applied. And so they're being hired at proportionate rates to which they- the application process, who those men and women are, and that we track then what our selection rate in proportion to those number of people who applied. And so they're being hired at proportionate rates to which they apply. There's different events for different focuses of job groups, and I'm not aware of a event that specifically recruits veterans, but I know that it's part of all of our recruiting strategies is to, again, diversify in all the ways that we currently know that we can track and talk about diversity.
Okay. Kathy? Question?
No, I'm all right with that.
Okay. Okay. You're okay? Chuck?
You're good. I have one question for you, John. On the chart, which is the unreadable chart?
Yes.
Is that data from this year? Is it this year's data compared to this year's data? Or is it last year compared to last year?
It's data for the first part of this year. I can get you the date ranges.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. So this is actual, it was correct in sometime not in?
It was data up until approximately a month ago, and I can get you the dates that was pulled.
So you're able to do that that quickly?
The goal, actually, for this data is to get to a place where we can view the data real-time or within a twenty-four-hour update. Currently, it's still at a particular point in time that we pull it.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Anyone else? Question? Kathy?
I'm just going to add that some of us are less able to read the data than others. Some of us have seen more years than others, and I'm going to ask next time if we can pull that out and make it larger on a separate sheet. I would appreciate that a great deal.
Sure. And I'd be happy to provide an electronic copy for the board to review that graph. Again, it was provided as an example so that you can see the consistency in the size of the bars that go from the applicant pool to those selected for positions.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, John. Next item, upcoming school board and budget committee meeting calendar. Next Tuesday, we're starting again at 5:30. Actually, we're not. The budget committee's starting at 5:30, so that's on Sharon. And then we have our meetings, the 21st and 22nd, those will be beginning at six. Those are also budget committee meetings. There will be no board meeting, there will not be another board meeting in May. So this is it, and then June 12th will be our next board meeting. Okay? Do what?
Don't leave. We have a budget committee meeting tonight.
That's on you. That's not on me. Sorry. That was your mistake, not mine. Okay. And now we have public comment on non-agenda items. Alice will bring me the list. Okay. Okay. The first, it appears it's Christine or James Hyen. Are they here?
They were rushing.
They were rushing. Okay. Well, then, let's move down to the next one, and we'll come back. How's that? McCray Carmichael.
I think they were rushing together.
Okay. Uh, okay. There, who are?
My name's Rob.
Okay. Okay.
I can see Christine.
Okay. James?
Yeah.
You're ready?
We can do that.
You're on.
Can you come with me?
Who is he?
I'm in emotional.
As long as he introduces himself, I don't care. Yeah, that's fine. You both have to introduce yourselves and tell us where you're from, so.
I'll start. Bert Thomas, I live right behind this place.
Bert Thomas, right behind this place, though he lives at Wendy's.
Almost, yeah.
James Hyen, I live over on Court Street, across from South High, and our kids attend McKinley Elementary.
Okay.
That's why we're here, to speak.
Okay. Three minutes?
Very good. Yeah, so we've realized if we read what we've been given to read, it's going to take more than three minutes. So to summarize the main problem, there's an EGC classroom at McKinley that is in a location that's quite disruptive because of the age of the children around it. And in particular, my young children have brought home stories of, I would say, disruptive characteristics involving lots and lots of yelling bad words and banging and screaming, and it's a little disruptive at home afterward. I can imagine what it's like in the classroom, and I think we've been enlisted to talk about this in part because we feel like there's some simple solutions that the district can take to either change the locations of these classrooms within the schools or perhaps isolate the age of the kids from the, particularly the youngest children in the school system.
With regard to the forthcoming budget cycle, we want to, in the context of what we've been seeing and experiencing in the classroom as volunteers, we think it gives a relevant point to speak towards what you're planning. Putting aside monies to appropriately handle where these EGC classrooms should be located is critical because right now it is a detriment to the learning environment of other children right now, and we want to make sure and encourage you to set aside those funds and use them appropriately for that. The teachers, we know, are doing an outstanding job, and they're working their tails off, and we appreciate everything that they're doing in that regard. We just hope that from a budgetary perspective, you guys will help think forward on that, and we would see that come into a better situation for these kids.
Okay.
Do we distribute now?
You can bring it over to Alice, and she'll make sure we get it. Thank you.
We thank you for your time very much.
Thank you. Okay. McCray Carmichael, are we?
She's not here.
She's not here. She's gone. Okay. So that finishes that. Now, Board Activity Report. Would someone like to share what they've been up to? James?
So I have not been at the last school board meeting because I was in San Antonio attending the National School Boards Association Annual Conference. It was a really good conference. I know Chuck was there for part of it as well. It was great to hear some of the workshops that are going on around the nation with regard to student achievement, and one that I attended that was really good is out of the Red Clay School District in Delaware and what they're doing for boys and girls there, and their holistic approach to no student is going to be failed, a failure in our school district. They have allocated within their budget, and I'm assuming they have the freedom to do this with their budget. I talked to the superintendent. They have, at elementary school, at middle school, and at high school, what they, what we would call a graduation coach, assigned to each family to make sure that when you've got a student who's not reading at the third-grade level, they have a coach that goes in and works with that family and that student to assure that that student gets to a third-grade reading level. When a student is not at ninth-grade credit on track, they have a coach that goes and meets with the family and the student for ninth grade on track. If you have a junior who all of a sudden isn't showing up, they have a coach who goes home. And with resources, we know what we can do, and it's a pretty amazing school district. That's just one of the workshops that I attended with regard to what's going on around the country, and it's a little bit frustrating to be from Oregon and not have the resources to do some of these things that these other school districts are doing that you know can address student achievement and what we need to do for our students. At the first budget committee meeting that I was not at, I was touring the state with the Joint Committee on Student Success. This is a legislative committee that's been appointed by the Speaker of the House and President of the Senate to travel the state to try to, they've been charged with looking at revenue reform and school improvement generally across the state, and I think the meetings are going very well. At each site, they meet with a student group, a business group, an education leadership group. That includes school board members, superintendents, teachers, classified employees, and parents from the community. That's about a two-hour meeting, and then they hold public testimony. They haven't really gotten to the issue of revenue reform yet, but they've seen some really cool programs, and I think probably the most engaging conversations take place between the students and the legislators about what do you need to stay in school? What is it that keeps you motivated to move through school? I think the conversations are going very well. Next week, they're in Clackamas. Two weeks after that, they're in Woodburn, and then I think they're on a hiatus for the summer and come back and tour the rest of the state. I will say, I was out in Baker, and they toured their career technical facility, and numbers of those legislators had toured our facility, C-Tech, and said, oh, you've got to come see C-Tech. If you think this is amazing, you have to come see C-Tech in Salem Kaiser. So it's been a useful activity for me, at least in my work, both here on the school board and what I do at the association, to follow that committee around the state. Hopefully, they will come up with some solutions to the issues that would hopefully drive us to the point where we could do what the Red Clay School District is doing in Delaware. So I apologize for not being here, but attending the national conference, I got to hear some really good workshops and what people are doing around the nation and at the state level, following that committee around. Was interesting to hear what the kids were saying about what interests them in education, so.
Great. Okay. Marty?
Yeah, a couple of things. I went to Adam Stevens. They're, Adam Stevens is an avid demonstration school, and they were supposed to have a tour, and I guess it got canceled, and then a bunch of Portland teachers showed up, and so did I. So they were able to quickly put together a tour of their avid classrooms, and we had students answering questions and everything. For me personally, it was nice that now I understand what my son was talking about when he was taking avid. Let's see. McKay, I got to see their auto shop, where the teacher's been there since the class started in nineteen seventy-nine, I think, or sometime in the seventies, and where they're building, not the auto shop, obviously, woodworking shop, they're building a new concession stand with no nails. It's all fit together to go with their new turf field. And Waldo, I got to visit some of the newcomer classes, so it was really nice.
Jesse?
I've been busy. So I, on the first of May, went to the, I was on the, aboard for the, oh, a panel, I guess, for the Salem Health Association. They were talking about an ACE study, basically talking about how trauma for kids can affect them later on in life. So I got the opportunity to be on a panel for that and to speak with a lot of our community members and a lot of medical professionals about how things could affect, and from my view, from personal experiences. I also had the opportunity to volunteer for junior achievement down in Albany, checked out the finance park, and so we were talking about possibilities about their programs and what, and how that could work with Salem Kaiser as far as financial education and literacy. I met with our, I went down to Swiegel, met with the principal there, where we talked about our, some of our dual-language programs. We also talked about student success. We talked about our curriculum, and I got to tour some classrooms, got to hang out with some teachers and some kids as well, so that was pretty awesome. And, let's see, I knocked on some of my neighbors' doors and up and down quite a few streets for the, for the bond, so that was a lot of fun. And then also, the Legislative Policy Committee, we had a meeting there where we talked about OSBA and a lot of the policies and issues that they're going to be addressing during the legislative sessions coming up.
Okay. Great. Kathy?
So I had a busy time, too. I was invited to Herod Elementary, which was very interesting. I thoroughly enjoyed it. They had several hundred parents there, and they had almost the old-fashioned school carnival type of thing. And it did allow the parents at Herod to share their culture with each other and with us. I was asked to present several things while I was there, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. It really made sense to pull that community together, and I hope I see more of that around the district.
Okay. Great. Sharon?
So although I wasn't able to attend, we wanted to say, sorry, wanted to say congratulations, obviously, to West Salem, South Salem High, and also Sprague for their incredible showing last weekend in the state choir championship. So West took home first, South second, and Sprague fourth. And also, this weekend, we have the orchestra and band state championships as well, so that's going to be as equal as exciting. We just do such a phenomenal job. I would have liked to have seen South perform, however, as Jesse said, we were out canvassing, and just as a reminder, there's one weekend left for the bond canvassing, so this Saturday we'll actually be at Sprague at 10:00 AM for the final bond campus.
Chuck?
Thanks, Sharon, for mentioning the bond. I've been representing the board on the Political Action Committee, and I think the bond campaign is going well, but we just need to remember to get everybody that we know out to vote. I think our fundraising for the campaign has been very successful. We're able to take care of a lot of the mailings and social media and signage and billboards and things, so I think that as a political action committee, we've done everything we can to get the message out to our communities. So one week from today is the deadline, so if you haven't voted, please, vote often, and, kidding. So that was one thing. The other thing that I just want to point out, I think it's like for the thirty-fourth year in a row, the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation had their Awesome 3,000 on Saturday at Willamette University. I think it was a record crowd, over thirty-two hundred kids participated, and as Karina mentioned earlier, nobody got lost, which is always a real challenge when you have that many kids out and around on the track. So congratulations to the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. As we speak, there's a group of volunteers at their new facility on Commercial Road doing phone banking tonight, so there's plenty of opportunities to get involved with that. Tomorrow night, very special evening, at 6:00 at the fairgrounds, we're having C-Tech's Signing Day. And if you are familiar with a lot of the signing days that happen for seniors who are going to be going on to a college for athletics or whatever, they have the Signing Day in the big hoopla, and all of the kids that are going to be coming to C-Tech next year are going to have a Signing Day at the fairgrounds tomorrow night at 6:00, and then they and their families will go back to C-Tech for tours, et cetera. So, board members, I'd encourage you to come and see the Signing Day. It's the first one that we've put together, and it should be a lot of fun.
Okay. I think that's it. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, so that's something to note in your calendar. And with that, I think everybody covered everything I had to say, so Superintendent Perry?
All right. I did just want to say it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have a video that Chair Kylo helped us with for the appreciation video out to our staff. If you have a chance to personally thank any educators, we should do it all the time. This is a great week to do it. If you are a social media person, you could add the Salem Kaiser Teacher Appreciation frame to your profile. You just search in Salem Kaiser and on the frames section, and you can do that for the... Nice, Jesse, what do you think?
I'll do that.
Alrighty. Also, tomorrow, though, is School Nurses Day, and so we want to be sure we pass on our appreciation to them. And then, as well as the C-Tech Annual Signing Day tomorrow night, we also have Avid Senior Recognition Night as well. So we've got lots going on, and we'll have plenty of activities between now and the end of the school year, so let us help you if you need help with your calendar.
Okay. And I believe that is it, so we are adjourned, and you all have a...
I was signed up to speak on public comment.
I don't have your name, sorry. Under which part of public comment?
There's three ones. Oh, I apologize. I was given bad information. I apologize to the air.
Okay. That's fine. We are adjourned.
Do we need to move some out of here?
Yes, we do, apparently.
Do you want to start at Sharon seven?